All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the La Junta City Council. Today is May 19th, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM. If we could all rise for our invocation. Heavenly fathers, thank you for bringing us together this evening, guide our thoughts and our decisions with wisdom and integrity, help us to serve our community with humility and purpose. May all we do bring unity. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. If you'll stay standing for our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Malaskis.
Present.
Stoker.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochilla.
Here.
Pintoya.
Rikoff.
Here.
All right. Moving forward, we have a proclamation, one of my favorite things to do, for the National Historic Preservation Month. So whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, sustaining development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the tangible aspects of heritage that has shaped us as people, and whereas the city of La Junta, understanding the benefits of historic preservation, created Chapter 2.38 of the La Juna Municipal Code in 2004, Historic Preservation Advisory Authority, and became a certified local government in 2019. The CLG designation was part of a broader initiative outlined in the Reimagine La Junta Plan and the 2017 Strategic Plan. Whereas there are currently two structures on the Local Register of Historical Places, which are the United Methodist Church of La Junta and Educational Building 2024, and the Airport Hangar Number 103 in the La Junta Industrial Park 2018. Now therefore I, the City Council of La Junta, Colorado, does hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Historic Preservation Month, proclaimed this day, May 19th, 2025. And I have three of them here. Do I have someone here to say something? Nancy, are you talking? No. Betty, are you coming up? I thought Ben was coming too. Is Ben not?
Ben said he will make it.
Okay.
I'm Betty Lopez, representing the United Methodist Church in La Juna. We're at 601 San Juan, and the building's been there since 1913. And we're so pleased to have this designation from the city of La Junta. And it may be one reason why this week, we found out that we've been listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and also the Colorado State Register of Historic Properties. The proclamation listed so many good reasons to save old buildings. And while I was studying the history of our church, I also read that saving old buildings is environmentally proper. The old buildings were designed with a passive design. They have tall ceilings, so the air in the house, the ventilation is excellent. I know from living in an old property that in the winter, you sit by a sunny window, and you're warm. And in the summer, at night, you open the windows, and in the morning, you close the windows, and cool air stays in there. So that's a great reason to save these old buildings. Another is that they're made out of materials that you really can't get today. They're good wood, quality products. And another reason for environmental is that if you reuse the buildings you have already, they are designed with the infrastructure in place. You don't have to build any more roads, extend any more lines. And so there's so many good reasons, and we have, La Juna has a lot of old buildings, and I hope they all get to last forever. But thank you.
Betty, before you get down, I got the email late Friday on your guys' being on the National Registry. So congratulations. I did call Lynn to congratulate her. I called Kelly Jo, and she said that you and Donna Heston also played a big role in this. Just for everyone out there watching on Facebook and in the audience, can you tell them what that process was like, of you guys getting put on there?
Let's see. We decided that it would be a good idea to save the building. So we got the form, a nice long form, and you work with the National Registry, and you have to find out who built the place, who was the architect, how the building was used. And we listed every wonderful detail of the architecture. And that's probably the most important reason we got on the list.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Let me get you your pro-
Are there any other buildings, any other properties in La Junta on the National Registry?
In Otero County, there's probably 20.
20?
In La Juna, I don't know.
I don't think there is. And your description of what you had to do, I think, under sells how hard it was and how much work it was, and just dipping our toe into the process. Mad respect to you for going through the process, and it's a huge, huge, huge deal that you guys got it. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, minutes of the previous meeting, I entertain a motion.
I move approval as submitted.
All right. I have a motion, or a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, a last for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Citizen participation, non-agenda items only. You will come up and have five minutes to talk, which Melanie will be playing the timer after your five minutes. Oh, and state your name. State your name and address for the cameras right there. Anyone for citizen participation?
Hello, everybody. I don't know quite a few of you. I haven't attended the city council meeting in probably 15 years. My name is Thomas Martin. I'm a property owner in La Juna. I reside in Rocky Ford. I'm here to address the issue of the vacant property zoning. I just have a couple of questions for the city of La Juna to clarify. So I own properties in La Juna. I'm a landlord, also a real estate owner. The vacant building is defined by significantly below standard usage. So my question to you is, I have Airbnb's all over the United States. Am I going to be flagged because my properties and Airbnb and sits idle for some times, and my utility usage is low? It doesn't seem fair. I'm providing service to the citizens of La Juna, and also people coming here to stay here. Am I going to be subject to that? Also, my other second question is about the commercial billings. It seems like the Braddish area over there seems to be quite a hot subject with you guys with these vacancy billing letters coming in the mail. I mean, I'm here, I haven't talked to Morgan Sons Glass, but I know that he uses the building, but he's there. I see him there quite often. It doesn't seem fair to me that he has to be, as a business owner, pay a dormancy fee. He provides the service to many of your vehicles in the city of La Juna. So why should he be punished? The other thing that I see is, I'll let you know, I used to own three churches in this town. I owned one on Third Street, right across, or Second, I believe it was, right across the street from the Sheriff's Department. I owned one on Eighth and Smithland. I owned one on Third Maple. I wasn't trying to bring these churches back up to be churches. But in turn, I beat my head against the wall trying to get the city of La Juna to help me. It was nothing but an issue. I had to pay a dormancy fee on these things forever. Now look at what happened to them when I sold them. Look at that church that I sold across the street from the Sheriff's Department, how much the disarray it is, back on the tax roll, not doing anything, blighted, broken windows. The church in Eighth and, I believe it's Eighth and Smithland, same way, blighted, vacant, not being used. The only church that I sold was in Third Maple. Do we not need churches in the city of La Juna? Do we not need nonprofits? I tried to work with the city, the city didn't work with me. I sold the property. Now look at where it's become. So my question to you is, finally, if you make these owners move out of the city and move out to the industrial farmlands, are their buildings going to go up for sale? Are they going to set vacant? Are they going to become blighted, maybe on the tax roll? What is your plan? You have to develop a plan. Every city needs a plan. Every city has blighted buildings. I don't care what city you are, you're going to find blighted buildings. There's other ways to deal with it. It's called citizen participation. Work with the citizens. Hear the citizens. Help the business owners out. Don't send them letters in the mail. Try to work with those. Putting them out there at the industrial park makes it quite hard for the people that, like Morgan Sons Glass, is you want to drive all the way out to get a piece of glass from industrial park. By the way, who owns the industrial park? That's my question. Whose warehouses are they? Are they owned by the city? Are you putting them out there to further the amount of funds that the city requests? My question, I have lots of questions, but I need lots of answers. So maybe you can think on what I said, and maybe next city council meeting, we can have some answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Reed. I think most of you probably know me, but for those of you who don't, I reside in the 21st of July, 22nd, in Rocky Ford. And I just kind of want to touch on a little bit on what Tom already said, because he did a pretty good job of saying it. I'm not sure where the city gets the attitude that they can tell, especially in residential landowners, what they can do with their property. As long as that property is looking good, it's maintained, whether or not it has utilities or not, I would like to see it have utilities, but whether or not it has utilities, as long as that thing's not an eyesore, how does the city make that decision that they can tell that landowner what to do with that? Rocky Ford, that guy thinks he can tell the landowners that if that place is empty and can be rented, then it should be rented. But yet, as landlord, we get no help from the cities either La Juna or Rocky Ford. That's the same thing. I mean, we send tenants down that may be good tenants, they don't get any help with deposits, nothing like that. They have to pay, you know, full high price deposit. And I get it. Dealing with tenants is kind of tough. I do have properties in town, that's why I'm here, and my business plan does not allow me to leave a property empty. So none of my properties are empty. But I do feel for anybody else in here that does have a property that's empty, that how can you tell them how to handle their properties, especially when the city of La Juna has a lot of dilapidated properties laying around? And where do you start? Start at home. Clean your own house before you start cleaning everybody else. And the next thing is the same with commercial property. Morgan Sons has been in business in that building for, what, 25, 30 years? I don't even know. It's been a long time. It's been the same thing. When I was a kid, that was a Pepsi or Coca-Cola warehouse, Coca-Cola bottling warehouse. It's a warehouse. What do you do in a warehouse? You store stuff. It just happened to be Coca-Cola back then. So what's the difference between what he's using it for now? He's using it for his windows. It's an active business in town. You know, same with La Juna Trading Company. They got a letter saying they can't use their, because it's against code or zoning, they can't use their billing they have for storing stuff in their place. So I guess we dumped hundreds of thousands of dollars into the new company that just went in and out west of town. And it seemed like we're trying to drive the companies that's been here forever. I think La Juna Trading Company's over 100 years. We're trying to drag these guys out. So that's the kind of feeling I get. We bring in competition for these guys, and then maybe when the competition isn't working out so well, then let's see if we can go ahead and stick another knife in and drive them a little apart. My next thing is the etiquette on the board on this council, especially at the last, well, the last few meetings. The guy was here talking about speed cameras, and I'm not sure who the patrolman is, the retired patrolman, had some very good questions, shoved under the rug, nothing was answered. Maureen Rikoff, at the last meeting, last council meeting, same thing. It was shoved under the board, under the rug, when she had valid, very valid questions. And yet, all she was told was, we need to vote for it. We need to vote for it. No. If there's any questions with any council member, you don't vote until everybody has all the information they need to make a good decision. And last but not least, I watched that community, or what was that, the last meeting you guys had last week?
Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission. And I am very disappointed, Jo and you especially, that Anne, I think he's here somewhere. Maureen had some very good questions regarding relating to this, and it was all pushed under the board. She didn't, nothing was answered. I mean, as a, I was on Zoom, I wasn't here personally, but it seemed to me like you guys were discounting her. For what reason? I have no idea. I don't know how many of you guys are rental property owners, and I know she is. She has some very good questions, and they were not addressed at all. So that's all I have to say. Do you have any questions, by the way, at the radio station, and anybody who's listening, come on? So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Angela Martinez. 722 Ratong is my current residence. I'm attempting to move myself and my father to his other property. The biggest issue I have is I feel like I'm continuously harassed, continuously in violation of some silly thing. Weeds do what they do. They grow. This is a weed-prone area, just like any point. If you throw seeds down, it's going to grow where it's going to thrive. And yes, they need to be cut. I agree. I completely agree with that. But I opened this today, and, or my dad presented me with this on one of his properties. We've been grieving. We've been grieving the past six years. Every year, we've had a loss. I don't know if any of you have dealt with loss, but it's not easy. It's not easy at all. There's lots of things. You've got to plan. You've got to figure out estate. You've got to figure out what you're going to do with vehicles. You've got to figure out what you're doing with properties. Here I am, by myself. My dad's disabled. I feel like he's being a target for these properties. I get a violation on a winter day from code enforcement, saying, oh, we need you to pick this area up, vehicles, debris, whatever, seven days. Look at the size of my property. Seven days. Seven days for this, guys. See that? It's seven and a half times the size of a regular average property in the vicinity. And I get a seven-day notice. Mind you, it was like 15 degrees that day. It was February. It was snowing. I don't think that that was, I just, I have a lot of issues with that. A lot of issues with that. I since have tried to, my best to maintain and clean up the area. I've gotten tags and registrations. I've auctioned vehicles. I've done all of the things to try to appease all the silly ordinances and all of the made-up rules that, you know, try to keep the governing process, you know, in place. But ultimately, it's like, I feel like I am running in an uphill battle constantly. I've been trying. The minute I try to do something, I get something like this in the mill. I am one person, one person. A small army would have a hard time dealing with all the properties and vehicles that I have to deal with. And all I'm asking for is some time. And, I mean, I should get due process, right? That's part of it. And it should be fair due process. Seven days is not fair with this. Let's see. As for vehicles, see, the ordinance says fitted car covers. What does it matter? Why does it have to be a fitted car cover? I don't know if any of you have bought fitted car covers. I have bought probably 20 in the past year. They deteriorate, they're weatherblown, they rip apart, and then you have to go right back and buy more. I'm trying to consolidate. I'm trying to limit what my dad has. But some people have a hard time letting go of memories, have a hard time letting go of what was. And I think we are just a number in your game. Are we just, you know, just, you know, paychecks, or, you know, you can give him a violation, him a violation, her a violation, or you're doing this over here, doing this there. And it's like, why? For what? Talk about it. Ask what's going on. Everybody has problems. You know, my dad's disabled. I have a hard time, you know, checking on him. I have to check on my grandfather. I've got kids. My kids, thank God, I get some help from them. But they work. I work. I don't know where, I'm supposed to find this time in the day to make things happen in this seven days. Like, I got to stop everything I'm doing, and, okay, I was focused on one project, but now I got this thing, and now I got to focus on a different thing. So it's a frustration, it's an irritation, and I, you know, I am one person. And it's not like we're in Greenwood Village, or, this is rural La Juna. We live in Cowtown, La Juna. It's like, we are used to rural-type stuff, not downtown Denver, you know, keeping up with that facade. But I just know-
That's time, Angela. Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation? Go in once, go in twice. All right, moving on. Property Management Fund Audit, Mr. Hart.
Yes, sir. So Brock and I, we've sat down and kind of laid out a process of what we're going to go through in order to do the audit itself. We're going to be getting really into that here over the next couple of weeks. We should have a preliminary report sometime in June.
Any questions for Mr. Hart on that? All right, moving on to unfinished business, Mrs. Harris.
So the first is listed as an ordinance of the city council of La Juna to adopt rules concerning use of automated vehicle identification systems.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I thought Todd Quick was supposed to be here to explain this to us.
We're not taking anything from the audience at this point.
I know we're not, but after you said last meeting, Todd Quick was going to be here to explain. That's the reason I'm still here.
Mr. Quick was unable to make this meeting tonight.
So why are we voting? There's questions.
She can still ask her questions. I entertain a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to address, I did ask that Chief Quick be here for a conversation about the topic, and I did receive an email this morning saying that Chief Quick would not be able to be here, which I think is unfortunate, because I do think we need to have a dialogue about it. I was invited to submit any questions that I had to the city manager, so they could be answered before we vote. And just wanting to express that what I'm looking for is a dialogue with the person in our community who's most affected by this change. So I'm still not inclined to support it. I think there's still too many unanswered questions, and would still welcome a dialogue.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do have some questions, and they would be best answered. Even if I directed them to Chief Quick, he would probably have to defer to the city attorney. And I'll ask a couple of questions, those having to do with secondary violations. As a result of somebody receiving a citation in the mail from a speed camera, and they choose to contest that, and if they weren't the driver of the vehicle at that time, they would have to disclose who was. And my question is, if there are secondary violations, if the driver of that vehicle was under any type of restraint, revocation, denied, or suspended license, would there be further action taken?
My understanding is that yes, there would, but only if they do a due process request. In other words, and I know you've got the copy of the ordinance in front of you. It begins, sorry, I'm going to try to adjust this, so I can still see. So in the first part of the statute, and this is written to track what the state of Colorado uses for the Avis law statewide, and that is, it first creates a notice of violation, and that's what you're referring to, that is actually the photo that's taken. If the notice of violation is just paid, then there isn't any due process action taken, and there would not, at that point, be any additional contact or ability for that secondary charge. If they were to process the ticket individually, because remember, what we're talking about here specifically, that's what Avis stands for, is the Automatic Vehicle Identification. Now, there is some discrepancy that I'm having, because at times, I'm hearing that Chief Quick characterizes this because it is a handheld machine, that it is not actually an Avis machine, because it is not fully automatic. In the other, that is in contrast to something like what they used to have on the main entry into Pueblo, if you remember. There was a stop sign there that had a camera back probably 10 years ago, that was fully automated, because it only took photos. Now, going back to what you were discussing, if they processed that themselves, like per ticket, then of course, there'll be an opportunity to both write the ticket and identify any secondary violations. If they do not, which is part of what we heard the gentleman talking about, who was from Louisiana, that part of the advantage of the automatic is that it reads the license plate and produces that without interaction of the officer. If that is done, then there would not be an opportunity for secondary violation consideration unless the party who was the registered owner of the vehicle were to take it to, in this case, it goes to Otero County Court. And if they were to do that, then I believe it would open all of those opportunities, because at that point, they would have to look at it. It would remove it from automated, the way that we're talking about, to being prosecuted the way that any other citation is.
And I guess in so much, that would also pertain to the lack of uninsured vehicle or an unregistered vehicle?
I think it would. And I think that that's something that we need to be paying attention to here. Primarily, the dialogue that we've had up to now has been that this, and of course, if you look at the statute, it specifically deals with two kinds of violations and no others. It deals with speeding, and what is the other thing? Is it something like moving in a school zone? Let me check. Because there's only two things that it actually can do tickets for. There's the draft. Hold on. So notices of violation for speeding, and then if you see 10.05, 022 in the proposed ordinance, it's disobedience of a traffic control signal. So anything else that we might be trying to police with a citation that is initiated with probable cause for a pullover, we wouldn't be able to catch in this system unless we were to do that secondary opportunity for the due process. This is mainly only, not mainly, this is absolutely only looking at speeding and the disobedience of a traffic signal, if in fact, we were to place a camera there. Now, the rest of the statute, because we haven't had opportunity to really talk about this, and I don't know if it's me who should be presenting it, but since I'm here, let me just launch, and you can tell me to stop when you've had enough. Part of what goes on with this statute is that this signage is something that I don't think anyone has really considered. You have to put up signs within 300 feet of where, unless it's yards, and I've read it incorrectly. Nope. It says feet, yep. Every time someone is doing this kind of testing. So there will be notice. It won't be like the experience that I was referencing earlier in Pueblo, where there was just a sign posted. These will be mobile signs that have to be picked up and moved, because that's what the state statute requires. Now, there may be an opportunity to argue that the Avis statute doesn't apply to the LiDAR gun. But at this point, what we're doing is we're talking about using the Avis statute so that it is as inclusive as possible, so that we don't have to wait on whether or not the LiDAR gun is identified as automatic or not. But let me make sure I clarify for those who don't remember. Remember that the LiDAR handheld device is the one that's being given to the city without any cost. And I'll remind you, because those who have a long enough memory will remember that there was also, at one point previously, the speed trailer presentation that was done. I want to make sure that we highlight that as the state continues to get more comfortable with this, we're identifying changes as well. For example, you might remember that when Jen Hinkhouse was here talking about the speed- about the speed trailer, part of the cost of the trailer was based on how many tickets it wrote, which is directly against the Colorado statute. We can't do that. It has to be either a flat fee or a subscription fee, but it cannot be a fee that is based on the money generated from ticket writing. So, that part I just think is worth making sure that you hear. The third thing that is important that we haven't talked about, if we're talking about how we pay for the system, how the signage works so that people will be given some knowledge that it's happening, that would be number two. Number three would be whether or not we are able to use it on particular roads. You'll notice in the statute, I have highlighted in all caps, "none yet," when it's referring to speed corridors, and you might remember me talking about this last, two weeks ago at the meeting, explaining that we, to have a speed corridor identified as a specific place that we're allowed, that we otherwise would not be allowed to use, one of these enforcement systems. So if you want to look at the statute, we can look at where we are allowed to have them. Residential areas is a place where we're allowed to have them. A road that butts up against a park, so in our case, it would be Colorado on one side and the one-way park, side on the other. But those are the places where the statute automatically allows you to have enforcement. If you're going to try to have enforcement on a place like Highway 50, which would make a great deal of sense if people were talking about where the largest activity might be, Highway 50 would be considered a speed corridor and would, for that reason, require us to do that additional research that we talked about two weeks ago, which would include getting the DOT involved to give us some information, as well as the Colorado State Patrol. In both cases, we need five years of stats regarding what enforcement was like before. So, that was why this particular version of the statute was presented without that, because at this point, we are really just trying to learn whether or not this is something that could work for our community. We are not ready to put an investment of all of that research into it.
And the last question, and I don't know if you know it, I'm not sure. I know with regular radar, you could ask the courts to take judicial notice. I don't know if this falls under judicial notice as-
Yeah, it's been a while since I've prosecuted, and I didn't have any experience with LiDAR. I know that one thing that we'll want to be talking about is making sure that everyone is trained with the technology that they're using, because ultimately, and this is more for the public than it is for folks sitting here, this means if you wish, when we talk about due process, with, let's just simplify this as a traffic ticket, when we talk about due process for a traffic ticket, we're still saying you have the opportunity to go to the county court and have the citation heard in the normal way that any traffic, it may be an infraction in most cases, I believe, so it would just be, it would not have some of the pieces that you hear if it's handled as a misdemeanor. But if it's just a traffic case, it'll be heard the same way that any other speeding ticket would be heard. But at that time, you would have the chance to make whatever argument you're gonna make, including whether or not the technology of LiDAR was correctly applied in your particular case. I think that most people have a story, it's usually from when we were younger, when we somehow got a traffic ticket and something miraculous happened, and we didn't end up being responsible for it. I think that that ends up happening a lot because of technicalities that go on with the court. But one of the more meaningful ways that people do argue against speeding tickets is they talk about how that technology works and whether or not the technology has been properly maintained. So if we were going to be using LiDAR guns with the city, it would be very important to make sure that we all respected the new technology that's being used, got trained on it, and understood both its benefits and any of the risks or possible errors that it can make.
And then just for clarification, Michael, the speed trailers that we first talked about, that was something Jen had researched, but this company was something Todd, was it Eads or another community, Springfield, and he's still okay with everything, to your knowledge, Mr. Quick?
So, to follow up on that, exactly what Joe said, it's my understanding, I can't speak for Todd, but he brought that gentleman here to do the presentation, and I'm almost positive that he's on board with this. Would it be better to hear him say, hey, I'm on board with this, and would it put everybody's mind at ease? Maybe so. The other thing with the email this morning is, we've known about this for two weeks, and we just received the email this morning, so that's an issue for me, because if he had a prior commitment, I mean, he knew about this when he was asked to-
I'm gonna stop there right there, because I sent the email, there was a little bit of a miscommunication. I sent that the next day, correct, Mel?
The next day to who?
To Mel. I can't send it to council, so I send it to Mel.
Okay. Well, we received it this morning, so that's besides the point to me.
But no, because, I'm just gonna stop you, because Todd did let me know that next day, so I don't want him to get in trouble for it.
Okay, well, I understand that, but-
It's still two weeks before we found out that he wasn't gonna be available.
So, that's what I'm saying. We found out that he wasn't available today, so that's, makes it look that way. You've clarified that, but it would be easier, I think, for him to be here, just to clarify for everybody else that he's on board. I can say that he's on board, because he brought that gentleman here, and since that's occurred, there's been no opposition from him to state that he's not on board with this, but I think to clarify for everybody else, it would be, to put everybody else that he is on board, for him to verbally say that here, so I don't know if we can table this.
This one right here, though, in my, I'm just asking a clarifying question, is not actually getting the software or anything on, it's just in case we do get it recovered, correct?
Well, this one would give us the opportunity to use the LiDAR. So, it's not software that would be attached to anything-
Yeah, so it's not connected to the company, it's not, it's just if we do it-
I know we're just putting the steps down to let us be able to do that, but I just feel that way personally, like, I'm okay with what we're putting out there right now, because that's not saying we're actually gonna do this. Todd will make that decision probably, whether we do this, so.
I just want to clarify, so this, when we start doing speed corridors and things like that, that's, I think we need Todd-
We've laid the groundwork.
Yeah, we would definitely need, not only Todd, but we would need a lot more input, because obviously, that's why the statute takes longer to make that, to do that research, is to understand whether or not that enforcement is needed. It's assumed, I think, by the statute that the closest, those local streets are the ones that the officers know best. I wanted to speak to one other thing that I know has come up, and that is, what are the additional costs that happen here? I only know of one, but I'll just put it out, because if it turns out that any of you are writing questions to Chief Quick, this would be something you could include. At this point, there is no cost for the machine that does, I can only think of it like shooting, but that's not a good word, so sensing, some kind of sensor, I don't know. Anyway, that the sensor itself is not going to cost us any money. And of course, if the citation is sent into county court, then the entire mechanism that normally supports any other traffic citation would go there. The only place that could be an issue, and if you're reading through the statute, you'll see this, so I want to direct your attention to it, it can become a civil penalty. Let's take, if you want to see it, I don't know. It's in your statute. So, what I've written echoes what the state does. In the beginning, it becomes just a traffic citation, and if you choose to pay that, it's the same. I was just talking with Councilperson Vasquez before we began, and saying it's the same as if the State Patrol called, pulls you over and says that you can pay this ticket, and if you just pay it, then you're done. That's the same as what would happen here. If you did not pay it, but also did not seek due process assistance by taking it to the county court, then it would become that civil penalty. And that's a piece that's worth understanding, because that set of words, when I first discussed this with Todd, I was saying, I think that the civil penalty concept is something that the council has not heard of before. Essentially, it is just a fine, but it is a fine that the city is charging based on this citation. And the statute lays out, the statute meaning the state, which of course, I copied to make it part of ours, it has a list of what the civil penalty would have to include. That civil penalty is then, the option that the city has would be to bring a collection action to get that money paid. Now, at that point, instead of thinking of it as an upfront expense for the city, I think that in a meeting that we had with Municipal Judge Doug Manley two weeks ago, he was saying that the way to think about collections is to recognize that it means you're getting some smaller fraction of the original citation paid, because the rest of it, of course, must be paid to the collection agency in order to make that recovery. But if I was going to try to be, again, just like my colleague here, I can't speak for Chief Quick either, but I have had multiple conversations with him in an attempt to draft this, to follow what his vision was. Another thing I can share is that, we were talking previously about how there are two ways of looking at this radar sensor device, since I'm gonna call it that. The radar, because it's operated by an individual, has some components that are not fully automated, and so the city of Springfield, or town of Springfield, does not consider it an Avis device at all. And they have not gone through the Avis process, but they do still use that LiDAR technology as just part of the assistance for their own citations. Versus, there's another small town called Hudson-
Okay, that's Morrison or Hudson.
Yeah, Morrison and Hudson both use it, but I borrowed pieces of the statute that Hudson used for writing this, but they are the same thing. Both of them are using the entire Avis statute in spite of still using the same technology.
Okay, so I'll just give you guys a heads up. So with Bob's Rules that we operate now, not Bob Fowler, but just Bob's Rule order, you know, you could do a friendly withdrawal, if you wanted to do that, or we can, it's up to you guys, if there's no friendly withdrawal. Any more discussion?
I have three questions. I appreciate Mrs. Harris saying Chief Quick's vision, that she is referencing, that Chief Quick has a vision, and my point is that we haven't heard it. And on the 12th of May, our city manager sent out a chain of command, a suggested chain of command policy letter, I don't know. But I think there is a recognition that the city runs better when people understand what their role is and they stay in their lane. And I very much think it is Chief Quick's prerogative, and that is his job as the leader of our police force, to articulate that vision to us, who are the policymaking board. Our lane is that we take suggestions, and we hear visions, and then we get to say, oh, that's a great idea. My second part of this is, I think, and this hasn't been said one time, I think the whole goal is to have people slow down and have safer drivers. But instead, we're talking about collections and notices and signs, and I think that there's a pretty old-fashioned way to get people to slow down, and it's that they see a whole afternoon of people getting pulled over and getting tickets. So I just, I think if we're focusing on safer driving and slower driving, I think there might be better ways to do it. And then my third and final question is, is there an urgency to having this passed tonight?
Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I asked a question. Is there any urgency to passing this tonight? Question mark.
I understand you've asked a question. I'm not part of the council, so I don't actually know that I can answer that. I would need to ask those who are within their lane making that decision.
It wouldn't be, and Paul has a motion, and there's a second, and without him withdrawing, the motion's still on the floor.
Well, I guess, this is an ordinance for the use of LiDAR, basically, within the city limits. And I use LiDAR, and I preferred it to radar. I don't know if anybody out there in the audience ever had the opportunity to meet during the course of my previous business, but LiDAR was more accurate. I liked it. If the unit I was using, if it sensed any irregularities in the atmosphere, dust, fog, rain, it just simply would not allow me to obtain a clock. And the difference between LiDAR is, it's like where radar is emitting a radio wave that goes out there, and as it, the further it goes out, the wider it gets, and then it bounces back to the receiving unit. So there's a few flaws with radar. With LiDAR, it emits a beam probably no bigger than this pen here, and it maintains that, and it returns it back to the base or the operating thing in the same condition, so it's more accurate. And all we're doing with the, if we do pass this, is we're saying it's okay to use LiDAR. And in 25 years, the best way to get people to slow down was one at a time, and whether it was a citation, a verbal warning, or a written warning, that that contact right there is, whether it was generated by a camera, I don't know how many people travel I-25 or I-70 going on into Denver, when you get closer to Penney Boulevard, and those notorious traffic radar that they have underneath the bridge there, everybody slows down. It has built in, I guess, voluntary compliance in the motoring public up there, that people will get to that location and just start slowing down, because you're gonna get a ticket at Penney Boulevard and I-70. If you don't know that, now you do, so there's no excuse for anybody that received a citation in that location. I'm not giving away any secrets, just like Pueblo with their light radar that they had there before, as you're going closer to, I forget, the Cross Street there, it still takes pictures. Once in a while, they'll still see it flash, but I don't think they're taking any enforcement action on that now. But that voluntary compliance is built in, and I can see this useful in school zones, up by the hospital, the crossing up there, up at the hospital. I know that's probably one of the widest areas marked for pedestrian crossings, and I've seen cars just fly through there. Down the hospital hill, I don't know if people are using that sign out there to check the accuracy of their odometers. That doesn't seem to be working, because I've been behind vehicles that kind of made me wish I was still working just for that one person driving that vehicle, but that's not the case. So I would still, with the motion on the table, I'm not going to withdraw it. I would prefer that we will.
Mr. Shoker?
Alright, so to touch on something Paul just said, LiDAR isn't anything new for the city. La Juna Police Department has used LiDAR before, and so this ordinance isn't allowing us to use LiDAR. It is more for the automated portion of this particular LiDAR. I think it's all kind of been said, but I am gonna get back on my soapbox that I've gotten on since this was brought in. I know the actual unit isn't gonna cost us anything, but how much is it gonna cost for data management? How much is it, who's gonna collect the fines? You know, what does it cost? Where do those fines go? And this kind of touches back on is, our residents should not be paying an outside source for any type of fine. I mean, we shouldn't be fining anybody to make money, but if we are gonna issue fines, they need to stay in the city of La Juna and not some outside entity. And like I said, when it comes to cost of things, if it's costing us money, we sit here and harp about staying within the budget. But we don't do the budget till November, so we shouldn't even be thinking about this until it's time to budget it into the budget, you know, if it fits. But that's my biggest saying, is we shouldn't be paying an outside entity for any fines that are issued to a citizen.
Can the public make a comment?
Could I just clarify quickly? I think that, let me try to understand what you're saying, because the fine, I think you're saying that the functioning of the process would cost money, so is that right?
Well, I mean-
The fines themselves would be paid to the city.
But who's managing the data? How much does that cost manage? Who issues the tickets? How much does it cost to have those tickets issued? And again, that's all, that's all things, even if the citizen paying the fine isn't paying for those, they're still paying for them, because we are.
Would this reg here lock us into that company that Todd brought in?
It does not lock us into any one company, no. But certainly if what Mr. Stoker is referring to is just the transaction costs, the difficulty of making that happen, any system is gonna do that.
We'd have to look at that. Would that go, would that be another question? Would that be?
You know, I think that, at this point, I have not discussed that with Todd. It is not something that I know. What I was assuming prior to this discussion was that they would be sent out automatically, and then there would be some kind of review after that to determine what in fact was paid versus what would continue to need to go through the process. And since I don't think we know right now what that fraction would be, I don't know if we know how expensive the managing and the rest of it would be.
I'll do a soft withdrawal. Friendly withdrawal. Okay, there it goes. Mrs. Harris.
All right. I'm trying to remember which one this is so that I can talk about it. Okay, an ordinance amending section 10.12.080 of the LaHanta Municipal Code to align with the amended enforcement timeline for junk vehicle violations. Okay, so this one is actually quite simple, at least the reason for me initiating, bringing it up. There was a change to this law in, to the rest of the junk vehicle towing law in March of '24, right before I came on in April. And that, the towing law has two parts, and if I was going to really oversimplify it, part one is, we're allowed to tow, and part two is, we have to give you some kind of information about why we towed. Now, of those, when this amendment was made, or not amendment, when the new change was made, the timeline was shortened to the 72 hours for we can tow, but the timeline was never shortened for the we will send you a summons. So at this point, it was out of sync because we could tow the vehicle within 72 hours, but we didn't have to give you a summons until 15 days later. And that just didn't work. We were having, we have some addition, what can always happen when we pass a new ordinance, if it is not, if it hasn't been what we call codified, meaning has it been put into the searchable code? If it hasn't been, then you have to find it in the ordinances. And this one is particularly sticky because lots of folks have gone to the ordinance after they end up with a ticket or a towed car, and they say, wait a minute, I was supposed to have 15 days, and now what's happened? It's because that was changed back in March, but it makes it even more worrisome if your car is missing because it was towed, but you don't have to actually get a summons for that until 15 days later instead. So I offered to sync those up so that they would be matching.
So was it something that was just missed by?
I don't believe that it would have been the intention to do that. I don't have any firsthand knowledge of whether it was missed, but it certainly does not appear that it would be appropriate to take the action and then wait so much longer until you showed the due process for the action. So even if it wasn't just missed, it does seem like the right way to be thorough about changing the time for towing.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
So if somebody goes online to pull up that ordinance, the housekeeping that you've done and were hopefully approved now, they will be able to see that without having to go search for the?
Not yet, because codification is not a process that, I mean, I don't, I think it's actually, Mrs. Schofield, is it the city clerk that makes, that sends those in? I don't know.
And they do it annually.
They do it annually. Now, what's interesting though is, it may not have been annual this time because that was done in March of '24, and obviously we've surpassed that, so I'm sure it is time. But yes, not until codification, which is that process of putting it online essentially, putting it into a book. Until that's done, it's an unpleasant lesson that you do have to look through the ordinances too, if you want to be thorough.
Okay, thank you.
When you say annually, what time of the year is that usually? End of year?
To your knowledge, do you know if anyone's been caught in this week? I don't know how else to, like, has there been anybody who has had their car towed that didn't get a notice?
No, we figured those things out. But it does come up, it comes up, and I'm specifically aware of it because in part of my role as city attorney is I have to talk with folks who have gotten tickets, municipal tickets downstairs. So I was aware of that and had talked with municipal judge Doug Manley and Cassie Sanchez.
Makes sense.
Any other discussion? If not, allows for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mrs. Harris.
All right.
Get her some water.
Yeah, that's right. Seriously, I already drained it all. Thanks, I really would, thanks. All right, an ordinance amending chapter 8.08 of the LaHanta Municipal Code concerning weeds, rubbish, and litter to clarify definitions. Okay, we recognize that there is a lot of dialogue that goes on about weeds and rubbish and various yard care, but I, at least my vision for this was that it did what I thought was maybe the easy part, saving more difficult dialogue for a different time. This literally provides a definition for weed. Now, it may not be the definition that any of you would use, otherwise it may not be, you know, something the public would use, but it is better than having no real definition. And specifically what was brought to our attention, Mr. Hart actually made this suggestion, is that there is now a height limit. There did not used to be a height limit, so now we're talking about a growth taller than a foot. Is there anything more you need on that?
Noxious.
Yes, and we, noxious me, obviously. We've been joking that it might be obnoxious weeds, but of course, noxious weeds we'd already made reference to before, and of course, that means that they spread where they're unwanted, and it may be that they're an invasive species and so on. But this definition aims to explain that a bit further and to explain how a weed might differ from one's regular landscaping.
All right, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Have a motion in a second?
A second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing, no, no, allows for your vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, you're done for a while.
All right.
All right, committee and board reports.
I'll start with the utility board meeting. You're gonna cover conduit? The RO plant routine maintenance, changed membrane and electrolyte, and the chlorine analyzer changed. In the, on the distribution side, if you notice, they've been working on the hydrants around town to make sure that they're still working. If you see the hydrants and they have white tops on them, that means they work. If you see them wrapped up in, I'll call it a orange snow fence, that means that they need continued maintenance or not up to working yet, but they're getting on that. And the work at Sixth and Santa Fe, what they were doing there, if you weren't directly affected by it, they were replacing a lead service line. Going on, the consumer confidence report has been completed and sent up to the state for the electric department. They dealt with a power outage up at the industrial park area. After they dealt with that, they replaced a lot of the high-pressure sodium lights, which are the soft glow lights that you have, and replaced them with more LED lights. A tree fell on a service in the alley at CVS, which is the daycare near Ninth Street and Grace, so they had to do some work there. Pretty much the electric department and that crew, they keep the city, they keep the lights on, they're tremendous at doing what they're doing, replacing poles and guide wires. Knock on wood, nobody hit a traffic light or a light pole on Highway 50 or First Street this, between communities, but probably as we're speaking out, I did hear sirens here a little while ago, so I'm hoping that wasn't it. They did hit the traffic light at Third in Colorado, that's been repaired, so really quick, and we used a digger truck to maintain that without having to shut down the intersection, so that was a good thing. And for sanitation, the utility board agreed to raise the sanitation by 3% effective July 1st of this year. And Martin's done a tremendous job with sanitation, is going to be introducing more cardboard receptacles around the city, which is going to reduce the number or the weight of cardboard that would be going to the landfill. We get charged by that from the county, so by utilizing these new boxes, that'll reduce what we're paying at the landfill. And this 3% should have probably been raised last year, the utility board didn't act on it last year because we had raised water rates at that time too, so trying to not overburden the city with, or the consumers with tax rate increases. But this was in accordance to the JK study that was done in 2022 that recommended this race, or this rate increase back in 2022, so that's it.
The second part of that is the utility board and the council had a joint work session with the Arkansas Valley Conduit. It was our first meeting with the conduit, probably a year and a half, just with the city of LaHanta and the Arkansas Valley Conduit. Since then, they have some new leadership with their, with them. We have some new leadership with us, with Mr. Hart. And we had 10 questions, but really it was way more than 10 because there was like four parts to some of those questions, but they took all our questions, they answered them, and they even got back to us last week with some more answers to the best of their ability. So that's an ongoing relationship that we're working through with them. We have a lot of questions that we want to know more details on when it comes to that, specifically the price. If you follow the conduit, it is now projected to be over 1.3 billion, with a B, to get that completed. So we want to know what that means for the city of LaHanta. What does that look like? Paul talks about, you know, increasing rates. With that kind of price tag, that would be a steep increase if all goes as is. So that discussion is ongoing. As soon as we know more, we'll share with the utility board and council on what they get back with us. So I think it was a good meeting overall. Anyone want to do planning commission?
Alda. So our planning commission met on Thursday, and we only had one item on the agenda. Manager Hart had done some research on the state statutes on what a planning commission should be doing, so I think we will have further conversations about that. It was tabled a bit because he weren't at the meeting. We did have, we did have citizen participation. We had Cynthia Sollenberger from the CASA wanting to confirm if, reading correctly, that purchasing a building that is downtown is, does not have, that using it as a nonprofit to house a nonprofit organization would be a noncompliant use. And it seemed that that is a correct assumption from the conversation we had. And I, using Cynthia, having asked questions about the zoning, I asked some questions about zoning, and I think there's still a lot that we need to learn as the planning commission. I think there's a lot of us that are new since the new zoning was implemented just a few years ago. So I asked for additional information and education about the different zoning and what the intentions are, and just have questions, nothing wrong with questions, about the current statutes and how the city is implementing them.
All right, any other committee and board reports?
Yes, I have a library report. Library actually met today at noon. Three things of interest, summer reading kickoff is coming June 12th, or sorry, June 2nd, June 2nd, from 10 to 12, and their theme is Color Our World. It sounds like it's gonna be fabulous, it always is. Ages birth to adults, so I think that includes all of us. Valleywide is at the library for pre-health screenings the second Monday of each month. I think this is a fantastic service from 10 to 2. You can stop by, get your blood pressure checked, your height and weight, your glucose checked, free, and it's a fantastic service, so I just want to make sure people know about that. And finally, there's an author talk on Thursday. It's always good to have good news going on in our community, so very cool that somebody with connections to our community, Mr. Abdell Barada, is talking about his Moroccan journey, dresses, trials, and triumphs. 4:30 Thursday at the library. That's it.
And you said the health, Dolly White Health, is there the second Monday?
Every second Monday of the month.
No senior senior? Not yet? All right, city manager comments. Mr. Hart?
Yes, sir. A couple things on my radar. The Walmart Grand reopening is happening this Friday at 10 a.m., so anyone that wants to get out there for that, it should be a pretty cool event. I unfortunately will be out of town for actually Colorado on Thursday and Friday in Pueblo, so I would not be able to be there. There's CML, Colorado Municipal League District Meeting in Wardway on Thursday evening. They start, the social hours are 5, dinner's at 6. I believe there may be still some time to sign up if you all want to attend. One thing that's been happening way too often is vandalism that we've had going on at our parks, specifically with the bathroom facilities. Twice in the last week, they have been vandalized. And when I say vandalized, I don't mean kids went in there and stopped up a toilet or wrote graffiti on the wall, I mean, they went in there and absolutely destroyed a toilet. I mean, there's absolutely malicious intent behind the destruction of the property there at City Park and the bathrooms. If y'all see something, say something, please. This stuff costs money to replace. Couple that with vandalism that had happened out at the golf course last week, and it just, it's funds that are having to be spent to fix things that shouldn't have been broken to begin with. So again, I just, I want to say, if you say something, if you see something, please say something. Mayor already talked about the conduit meeting. I want to take congratulations to the LaHanta class of 2025, as able to send the graduation last night. Lots of really cool moments there, especially when the, and I don't know if she's a counselor, I catch her title, but she was talking about all the scholarships that this class had put together, and I don't remember the exact number, but it was north of $1.7 million in total scholarships that the class 2025 was able to put together, so I think that's phenomenal. I mean, I don't know if that's, you know, on par with what it usually is, but $1.7 million plus dollars in scholarships is amazing in my opinion. Tomorrow, don't forget, we have the Benz Ford tour going on. We're gonna leave here, be here like 8:30, leaving shortly after that. And, oh, last thing is, I'm gonna be submitting my application for the Colorado Municipal League Executive Board. I'm gonna be submitting that before the end of the week. Right now, the southeast corner of the state has zero representation on that executive board, and I want to try to change that. As most of y'all know, I was on the Oklahoma Municipal Board for several years prior to me taking this position here, as well as being involved with OML for, I don't know, 10-plus years prior to that, so I'm hoping to be able to use some of that experience that I had there to be able to apply here to make sure Southeast Colorado is represented at DIPR. And that's all I have.
All right, governing body comments. I just want to start off with saying that we have, on ethics in government, and this is something I'm gonna be getting out to Mal, and she's gonna send it off to you guys. But Ms. Harris, if you want to explain that, we already have it in place, but we're just not, it's just stuff that you find as you go along, that, you know, you think you're doing something the right way, and it's like, wow, you're actually missing some stuff here. But if you want to talk about, I call it conflicts of interest, that's not the actual legal name for it though, but I noticed when the nursing, not the nursing, yeah, Blue Stem did theirs, they had to all do a disclosure form on- did theirs, they had to all do a disclosure form on any outside businesses that they did and all that. So I got with Mrs. Harris and said, is there something that council should be doing? And she looked into it, and we actually do have something already statewide that Home Rule can just adapt. I think we had three of the many that we could use. So if you want to take it from there, and then just know that that's going to come here this coming week.
Sure. Okay, let me try to find where I sent these because I don't know if I had them all memorized. So what Mayor Eyal is discussing is that in 2010, the City of LaHanta adopted one part of an overall ethics and government statute that was adopted at the state level. And that was 2418104, if anybody cares. So what we already had was a rule around confidential information being used to create pecuniary gains, monetary gains, or any kind of gifting that was outside of just the regular Christmas kinds of things. And that's the only one that we have. The state statute, though, includes the, the rest of the things that you might expect. And if you aren't familiar enough with these to expect anything, I think that's probably fair. I've done a lot more reading on this since Joe asked me to. But generally, there are requirements that disclosures be made, most specifically if a party is going to be making a decision in either a quasi-judicial area, quasi-judicial meaning that they stand in judgment of others, people who are doing that. Of course, in government, we would want them to make, to be fair in the decisions that they make. So the, the various other parts of it are all, and I, what I did is I emailed to Joe the series of them, that I was going to see if there's any part of just the legislative intent that I could share with you. Primarily, the one that I was bringing to the attention of Joe when he asked if there were any, was the local rules of government. Now, quickly to review, we are a home-rule city. That means we don't have to let the state tell us what local rules would be. If in fact, the thing is absolutely local, LaHanta gets to do that themselves. But if it turns out that someone else has already put the brain power into writing something, and LaHanta got to use the very same thing, that wouldn't be such a bad idea. So what we have here is a set, looks like I'm offline, so I'm going to have to recite it instead. But the, the rules for local government had to do with making disclosures to make sure that those things that the, anyone within public service is doing are not able to somehow be treated with what they call the appearance of impropriety. The appearance of impropriety is a different concept than actually impropriety, which has its own. But it, of course, we want to make sure that things are safe, are, are fair. But what Joe was asking is, are there any examples of laws that say, and we try to make sure it looks fair and appears as it should from the outside. And so what, what I think we're talking about doing is adapting the rest of that 2010 Colorado statute to be LaHanta-connected, and then probably, we haven't actually talked about this part, but I'm assuming, present that as an ordinance. Is that?
That's what I intended. And I'm going to use myself as an example. For my professional job, I work for Edward Jones. If for some reason the city was interested in switching their 401K, I should not be a part of any conversation. I shouldn't even be around for something like that. So if we don't have these things in place, you know, there, there could be impropriety for stuff like that. So I just want to make sure everyone knows why I think it's important we have these things. Not for us particularly, but for us and everyone coming after us, that this is something that we do going forward. Any questions on that? Any other governing body comments?
Yeah, so address a little bit of, you know, concerns over violations or anything that's issued, you know, as far, especially if it comes to weeds. You know, you get a seven-day notice and it's not going to work out. Well, it's always going to be a seven-day timeframe unless you come and talk to somebody. I'm pretty sure between Michael and anybody else you'd be dealing with, they're willing to give some grace period if, you know, you come and present your issues with them. But if you don't say anything or bring it up, then you're, you're going to have the seven days or whatever it be. So I just encourage anybody that has any questions or concerns to reach out to the city to address them. So that way they're, they're heard and have that conversation. And if it is like a deal with your weeds, maybe you can get a little bit more time to get them cleaned up. Last thing I mentioned last meeting, but I'll remind again because, believe it or not, it's already Memorial Day weekend coming up. So I'll remind everybody, Saturday, the Elks Fishing Derby. Registration's 8:30, ages 5 to 15, or if they can fish on their own, we don't care how little they are, just we hope they can fish on their own.
15 or 50?
Well, 15, as in kids. Not, not, not kids at heart either.
Is that also part of the CPW?
Yes, so as part, that's one of CPWs, or yeah, Parks and Wildlife. It's one of their advertised free fishing days. And so the Elks have put it on for about 25 years, and we partner with CPW, who provides the fish. They stocked the pond prior. They, they provide fishing poles and just general education. And then Color Up Bank and Trust has been our partner for a long time, and they provide the prizes that are given out for the category winners. But yes, CPW will be there as well.
Mayor Eyal, I had a question to follow up on the weeds issue. Would it be useful to do kind of a discussion to follow Mr. Stoker about what, how that normally does take place? Because it didn't occur to me that the public may not be familiar with what their options are when they get a citation. I know this is part of why it was difficult for me to write the rest of the ordinance, is because it, it still may not be fully decided. So it might be that we discuss the whole thing at a different time. But for the moment, the thing that Mr. Stoker did not include, which is certainly also a possibility, is if the citation has been issued by the LJPD, then calling the municipal court and arranging to talk with me would be an option as well. That's what the pre-trial meetings are about that happen on the first Thursday of every month. But if that's unfamiliar to you, you can call and make arrangements to do that.
Like a one pager type?
Say again?
Do you want like a one-page?
No, I was thinking more, once we decide whether or not there will also be an administrative...
We're going to do a second, aren't we? Do we do a second on that?
Oh, on the definition, yes, we'll do a second, but...
Maybe at that time we can...
Sure.
Yeah.
But I think that's, at some point, we will need to make sure that we make clarification about certified letters.
I think when we do the second, we'll have just a little section on that, perfect for that.
I was going to echo what Jeremiah said, as far as taking those points and, and coming to the city. You guys, Lisa's not here, but you got a bunch of people up here who our contact phone numbers are readily available, and we could point you in the right direction to who you may need to speak to, to deal with some of these things. If you need an extension, I, I think everybody here is willing to, you know, the city is willing to work with you if you work with them. You know, it's, it's not a, a one-way deal. It should be a two-way deal. And, and I think even on some of the building issues and the building use issues, I think there's some compromise in there, you know, if, if you go and talk to the correct people. But you have to be willing to take that step and not, not feel like we're not going to do anything anyways, or, you know, it's up to us to do everything for you. So we, we're willing to work with you. So I think if you guys take that step, that, that can occur, so.
Yeah, a couple of things. Just wanted to thank the people who came and talked to me. I appreciate you taking the time. I know we all have better things to do than, or we have, we have things we would rather be doing than attending the city council meeting. So I appreciate everybody who took the time to be here. So I think we all do want the same thing for LaHanta. I think that nobody wants blight, nobody wants neighborhoods that aren't attractive. We all want communities that are livable. So I hear you, and I agree we want the same things. And I think that the people, our staff, also want those things. And figuring out how to remove the disconnects, that, that's what we should be focusing on. I, I appreciate people's time in trying to figure out how to, how to solve some of these problems, because I do think we want the same things. A couple, three other quick things. Congratulations to the bowling alley for opening. I think it's awesome that they're pulling that off. Yielding equitable entry to housing and wellbeing, also known as Yee-Haw. We have our monthly meeting tomorrow from 3 to 4, if you're interested in helping out the efforts that we've had around that in Otero County and beyond. We'll be meeting annual bookstore in the student center at Otero from 3 to 4. And then Ward 3 Listening Tour, next one will be June 9. We are meeting outside again, Breckin Tyler Park, second Monday of every month from 6 to 7. Everyone's welcome. You don't have to live in Ward 3. So welcome to join us for that. That's all I got.
I just have one thing, and everybody wants to get out of here. But thank you for, the citizens for showing up. I echo Maureen's sentiments on that. This, this is the appropriate place to bring concerns. And I'm not saying that, if you, if you can contact me, contact me. If I can work for you, I will, if you're not in my, in my ward. It doesn't matter. Once we're up here, we serve the city as a whole. That being said, I'd like, I see Martin in the back, and I just want to, Martin has done such a tremendous job in, in his undertakings as the city engineer. The work that he did on Bradish, on the streets down south of, it was Bradish and Grace, I believe, and those seats were, those streets were in such poor shape that people didn't want to drive on them anymore. That's how bad it'd gotten. But Martin fixed that. And it's not cheap. Martin also mitigated the flooding when it, last week when it rained for a couple, two, three days in a row. And I kept thinking of certain businesses down on Second and Bradish that are just, they just get put through the rain whenever it rains and floods. But last week, even with the river being full and, and rising to a certain level, the pumps worked the way they were supposed to. Martin's done some signage down there. He's been receptive, responsive to, to doing things. So thank you, Martin. I wanted to say this last council meeting, but I wasn't here, but kudos to Martin. Thank you. One more thing, sorry. Just, just to follow up to, to that. But yes, thank you for everybody who came. Understand, Joe's made this statement multiple times before, but when it's public comment time, it's time for you to talk, and it's time for us to listen. So you may not get a response right there, but we're, we're taking that information in and, and listening to you and forwarding that to the correct people. So just, just know if you don't get a response right there, that's why, because it's your time to talk, so.
That's why I go in first.
Thank you all for coming out, and I adjourn this meeting. Have a good evening.